So, we are ready for a motion to adopt the agenda? Any discussion? Next, your school highlights.
We are so excited because this is one of our favorite times of the board meeting. We get a chance to celebrate students and staff and acknowledge individuals who are working so diligently in their schools. And we're gonna start off with the attendance award. This is a really big deal. We have a very heavy trophy. Extremely heavy. And it travels for those people, if this is your first board meeting, about three years ago, we have this traveling trophy and it goes to the school with the highest attendance. And so, we have a little bit of a drum roll here. This particular school has 96.46% attendance. And the drum roll is McCarter Elementary. McCarter Elementary family. Okay, McCarter Elementary family. I'm a stall and you look beautiful. Okay, I need to shake someone's hand and give you your certificate. You're gonna take the picture again later, I'm gonna shake your hand. Here's your certificate, take it with you. Wow. And so, I'm gonna give the microphone to the principal. She's been here so many times, she now has a whole presentation for you. Can you guys come as far as you can?
We brought part of our entourage and these are kids with stellar attendance, of course, and they're just awesome children. So, we have Maya, who is, you met Matthias, this is his little sister. We have Maya Bledsoe. We have Morgan and Alex Wheat. And then, we have Darien Wheeler. Maya, what grade are you in?
First grade.
Awesome.
Second grade.
Kindergarten.
Third grade.
Okay, so, I ask all of them just to tell the, and I don't know what they're gonna say. So, just tell the board, if you don't mind, the best thing about being at McCarter Elementary School. Because I feel like those are the things that keeps these kids coming back day in and day out. So, what do you like best about McCarter?
My best about McCarter is I like when my teacher reads to me and when she does, when she teaches me math.
Excellent. And you might guess Maya's mother is also a teacher. We love that, great answer.
My favorite thing is doing math.
The support I get from the people at school.
Love to support you. You're easy to support, 'cause you're a great kid. So, we have just a couple little certificates for the kids. Perfect attendance awards and Chick-fil-A coupons, 'cause those are always good. And I wanna thank parents for definitely getting the kids to school. We couldn't do it without you. We really appreciate you putting school as a priority and getting the kids there unless they're sick. So, thank you so much, you guys help us out a lot.
Do those parents stand up? Who are the parents of these children? Well, it is our distinct honor to take this very heavy trophy and present it. Will you go ahead and hold the trophy? You have a TPS Police Junior Officer sticker. Why do you have that? Do you all have that? Did you, you just earned that walking in the building? And it's my honor to present this to one of the TPS Junior Officers. Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
We may need one or two more stickers, TPS Police Junior Officer people, to make their way up to the other couple of students up here. That is so exciting. Alright, with that, we are going to transition to our next award. We have a video to share with you to kick this award off. It's our Senior of the Month, again, another tradition that we started. So, our Senior of the Month this year is from Cap City. And so, the Capital City video, please join us in watching that. And we're gonna turn it over to our principal and call our student on up.
I see Allison in the hallways, in her classes. Today, she is amazing young lady. She started here with having difficulties being in a regularized building. Now, she is one of my most gifted students. She has grown so much.
All the staff members have been awesome and they've just helped me accomplish my goals and what I wanted to get better at. My favorite part of my senior year is probably the more opportunities I've had, so being able to start the VIP program at Stonehouse. And what I'll be doing there is internship.
She has always loved animals, ever since I've known her. She helps take care of George, our therapy dog. She knows a path to take. She has multiple years planned out.
I'm going to go to Allen to get my core classes done and then do Vet Tech online through K-State, which will be Colby School Online. Be a Vet Tech for a couple of years and then decide if I really want to go to school to be a veterinarian. I'm gonna miss her terribly. She has been such an inspiration to everyone and has done a wonderful job representing Capital City. And I know that she's gonna do a wonderful job representing Cap City in the future and hopefully into that position.
And with that, I absolutely love this student. I met her three years ago and she gave me the tour of Capital City and she is just a pleasant and genuine young lady. We'd like for Ms. Lee to come on up and Ms. Allison Harris, come on up. Alright, Ms. Lee, did you wanna say a few words? Another studio part goes in place, do you like to say a few words?
Well, I just wanted to say, it has been a privilege to know Allison. I've known her for five, six years? Four, five, yeah, a long time. I started with her and she and I were not on the same wavelength to start school. But, the one thing about Allison is she kept growing. She kept growing with us and she kept moving forward. There was a time that she was doing so well, she said, "Let me go back. Let me go back to my home school. That's what I wanna do." She did a great job of trying and discovered that that just wasn't for her. And so, she did the right way and said to us, "Hey, I need to come back. I need to come back to where I can learn, where I can get my education." So, she is beyond her years in the way she speaks, the way she presents herself, and I can't be prouder of anyone than Allison.
Hi, my name is Allison Harris. I go to Capital City School. I just wanted to say that I really love the school and I have been there since about halfway through sixth grade. And they care about the kids. They don't, they care about helping them learn more, but they focus on their needs and what they need and they help them grow and just become a better person. And I've loved Cap City and all the support I get there.
I'm gonna open it up to questions. Orvem, do you have questions?
Questions? Mr. Williams?
Congratulations, Allison. She and I go back a few years and she, the future is yours. It's an honor knowing you and being part of that process.
Dr. Anderson?
Ms. Harris, I'm a veterinarian and we occasionally hire veterinary technicians where I work at Hill's Pet Nutrition. So, when you get further down the road and get to experience some of your belt, please give me a call. Congratulations on your work.
Thank you.
Dr. McCarthy?
You've gotten to experience the change in facilities, right? While you've been at Cap City, it's been a little different. What's that been like?
I gotta say that the new building was really awesome. They built it to what the kids need and they structured it around each kid's special needs. So, we have safe spaces that kids can go to and we have long hallways that where kids can take walks. And they've split off the like different high school sections so that the kids stay in their own and learn their own classes. They don't have to go all the way across the building to get to classes besides their special classes like facts and woodwork. So, that new school is beautiful and it's worked really well.
So, you feel like that's been an improvement?
Yeah.
That's good. We really value your input, but even more, we are so proud of you. You're just a great example of a TPS student and we wish you the very best. It sounds like you're going to have real success in life.
Alright, congratulations, Allison.
We'd like for you to stay around for photos, which will happen momentarily. At this time, we also want to, we do more recognitions and we'll start off with, this presentation will also be given at the time when we prepare to have our board meeting officially begin. So, if you'd like to learn more about the clinic, please do stay for a few more moments because they'll be presenting. But, before we get to that presentation, we also want to acknowledge them with a certificate that we have as well. Several members are here from the University of Kansas Health System. We are so thankful for this partnership and the certificate. Can all of you come forward, please? I think not everyone is here right now, but many of the members who have played a part. And I'll read the certificate again, we'd like for you to stay around for the photo. Topeka Public Schools recognizes University of Kansas Health System for opening the Clinic of Care at Topeka High. And again, if you stay around for the presentation, you'll get a chance to hear what exactly is that, what will those services be. But, we thank you for partnering. This really is a game changer for Topeka and for New Legion. We'll take another photo in a few minutes. And now, for our proclamation. This month is School Board Appreciation Month, so be nice to our board members every month, but particularly this month. As part of School Board Appreciation Month, every school has given them a shirt or a piece of attire that they can wear when they visit their buildings, 'cause they're always in buildings. And at this time, we would like to read the proclamation for our board members. Is there a student that would like to help me read the proclamation for our board members? And we're gonna read two sentences at the top and two sentences at the bottom. Which student wants to help read this? Don't hog raise your hand, okay? Any student that wants to come up and help read this to tell our board members how much we appreciate them. Okay. Allison, I knew you'd come. I said you're one of my favorites and you were so excited to come up that you wanted to come up and read just a few words. Are you in third grade? Second grade? Wanna try and hear me read? Okay. You said so. Alright, so, I'm gonna come over here and all you're gonna do is just read a few of the words up front. What's your name again?
Morgan.
Morgan, okay, I'm gonna say this to our board members. So, Morgan, we're gonna start off with you, alright? So, at the top, it says, "Proclamation of Topeka Public Schools National School Board Recognition Month." And what is the month?
January 2019.
Yes. So, the first word says, "Whereas the mission of the public schools," you wanna pick up and say it?
Is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society.
She is the best candidate. Alright. And then, for the last sentence, "And witness whereof,"
"We, the Board of Education of Topeka USD 501, do hereby affix the signature of our President and the official seal of the Board of Education this 17th day of January 2019."
Thank you, Charme Orvem, for all the things. I believe that concludes our recognition.
So, Dr. Anderson, do we get a picture with the Board of Education?
We can. So, we will take a five-minute break.
Ready to have a motion to dispose of business by consent?
Mr. President, I'm with the board approval that items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and persisting contracts for on behalf of the board.
We have a motion and second. Anybody? I do have one discussion item. 14.1, Mr. Robbins, would you like to help us with that discussion item and illuminate all of us what that involves?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would. Might call your attention to the fact that tonight, I'm dressed in green so that I can talk about green. 14.1 is about an opportunity that the district has been presented to get even further involved in green energy and become even more responsible than what we currently are when it comes to protecting the environment. 14.1 is an agreement between the district and Westar Energy. It is entitled Direct Renewable Participation Service Agreement. And what this pertains to is a 300,000 kilowatt wind farm that is located north of town, that will be located north of town, along 75 Highway up in Niwah County. It's the Soldier Creek Wind Farm. As I said, it's going to be produced, it's going to be able, rather, to produce about 300,000 kilowatts of power of electricity. We have an opportunity to become one of the participants, along with several other entities, in purchasing power from this wind farm to provide approximately 78% of our required usage for Topeka Public Schools. The research has looked at our historical use over the past five years of kilowatt-hours worth of energy. It's been determined that by us purchasing 4,500 kilowatts, it would provide 78% of what we need for this district. So, just think that we have an opportunity, for instance, in this building, close to 80% of the electrical power that is generated, okay, would be an alternative energy source. This 4,500 kilowatts is expected to be online either late in 2020 or early 2021. By us entering into this agreement, and it's one that I took considerable time to take a look at because it is unique in the fact that very seldom do we engage in a long-term agreement. This agreement is a 20-year agreement, but over that 20-year timeframe, we do lock a price in for the kilowatt-hour of 1.8 cents. Just to kinda give you a comparison, if we were at 1.8 cents per kilowatt-hour over the past five years, we would have saved about a quarter of a million dollars when it comes to our electrical utility costs. So, going forward, those costs are forecast to do nothing except increase. If you look at what the costs were over the last quarter of 2018, it was around 2.1 cents, 2.2. For the first quarter of 2019, that cost is right at 2.39, about 2.4 cents. So, us locking in at 1.8 cents, as those costs continue to escalate, is just going to increase the amount of savings that we would have. Not only that, but it also provides educational opportunities for our students. You know, we have a green energy pathway out at T-Cow. The students are enrolled in. So, not only do we have savings, but we also have the opportunity to be more responsible as far as our environment and provide some unique educational opportunities going forward. We do have with us in the audience tonight, a gentleman by the name of Mr. Russ Cobb. I'll ask Russ if he would come up to the podium. Russ is a senior business manager with Westar Energy and the individual who first reached out to me and asked us to give some consideration to this opportunity while waiting to see if there were other entities that were going to jump on board or take a look at this. There have been others. KU is part of this consortium now, K-State, Marshman University, the city of Manhattan, Douglas County, just to name a few. All have decided to participate in a similar agreement that the board has been asked to take a look at this evening. Russ, do you have anything you'd like to add?
You summed it up fairly well. This is a program that if you guys agree to join on tonight, that will fulfill the part of the wind farm that has been set aside for this program, that will close it out. So, you're getting in, like Mr. Robbins said, we've been waiting to see and everybody else is jumping on and it's time to jump on. It's a good program. There's virtually no risk because if the wind farm doesn't produce what we said it was gonna produce, you pay what you would've paid anyway. So, the savings are there. If it produces more, you get even more savings. So, it's a win-win for you with no risk. So, it's a great, great program and we're very happy to do this. This is the first of its kind that Westar's ever done. We started out with getting approval to do it from the Kansas Corporation Commission and the idea was to see if we could get it subscribed. Some people are like, "Well, you're not gonna get it taken care of." We have. And we will have another component coming on, offered in the near future as well for the next wind farm, to give the opportunity for those entities that did not get involved first time around, a chance to join. So, and that's one thing too, we have future possibilities to be able to join more for you guys to join in on the next time around to go ahead if you so desire.
Any questions? Dr. McIlroy?
Just one comment. We were doing the math when we discussed this in the finance committee and if there's 120 turbines and 300,000 kilowatt, I'm not sure I've got the units right. Basically, two turbines would sort of provide enough energy for our 78% share.
That's correct. That's correct. The turbines are the exact size. Let me tell you the exact size I've got here. They're 300, 120 turbines, divided that into 300 gives you the size. So, about two and a half, a little over two and a half megawatts apiece, which the part that you guys are subscribing to is four and a half megawatts, that's four point, 4,500 kilowatts.
Driving down the road, you see those turbines in the back of the truck and you realize how big they are, but only two of them will provide all of Topeka Public School, or 78% of our energy.
That's correct. They're big. They produce a lot of, a lot of power, yes.
I'm pleased to support this.
Now, one important thing to note is that Topeka Public Schools would be the only school district in this area that would be taking advantage of this opportunity and participating in this wind farm. There's only one other district in the state of Kansas that is part of this agreement, but we're the only one in this area.
Ms. Kirk?
So, how big is this wind farm? How many turbines do you expect to have out there?
So, there's 120 turbines.
120.
I do not know the size of the scope of the property, but typically, a turbine is on about 20 acres, is usually, they put them around that spacing. I don't know if it's specifically on this farm. So, but it depends on the topography and everything else, how far they have to put their car. But, the area, it's up north in Niwah County and it's gonna provide jobs during construction and then permanent jobs as well to operate that farm up there, so that's good for the communities up there as well and the landowners are really.
The landowners.
Landowners are really excited about it, yes.
How many, just, help me again, you know, 'cause we talk about our students being interested in green energy and possibly like working for Westar to take care of those growing wind farms. How many people or technicians does it take to operate then, the big, the one that you are planning, let's say, up there?
This one, we're expecting 15 to 20 full-time jobs to operate that wind farm, is with anticipation for that. And that's your turbine techs that climb up, take care of, do the maintenance.
People who have no problem in heights, right?
Right, exactly. Exactly. And I give you, talk about that program, I'll give you a little side note, Niwah County Community College has a program for that.
Niwah County, right.
Yes.
I understood they did.
Their first three or four years, they never graduated anybody. And the reason was, they found out the people would climb and the companies would hire them and said, "We'll train you and send you to college later on." And so, once they get into the program, they'd come in, they'd pull them out of the program and take them throughout the country to work for them and then send them to college after the fact. So, the climbing is quite interesting.
Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on business by consent? Ready for superintendent's report?
Alright. Mr. Gallin, can you assist Mrs. Dr. McCarthy, please? As we move into the superintendent's report, we'd like to ask for the University of Kansas Medical Center staff to return to the podium, the individual that will be presenting for this evening, and to be introduced and introduce the staff. As he approaches the podium, I'll just share a little bit, we are so excited about this partnership. Several years ago, Dr. McCarthy and Dr. Garcia, a parent at Topeka High, visited Jennings School District, looked at the spot clinic, and there was a vision some time ago about having a school-based clinic. Since then, fast forward, at Topeka High, Ms. Morrissey has been focused on well-being and mental health, physical health, as has the board. It's in our strategic plan. So, part of our well-being initiative is to open a school-based clinic. And without giving more details about that, we just want to thank and acknowledge the great partners we have here this evening who have jumped on board in every way possible with the new clinic that you'll be learning more about. I'll turn it over and if you can introduce yourself, the members that you have with you, and then we will turn it over to you for the presentation.
Sure, happy to. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So, I think we're gonna hand out a couple documents here as well. My name is Chris Wilson. I'm the vice president for system integration and innovation at the University of Kansas Health System. And with me now, we have Jessica Nichols, who's a nurse practitioner who will be supporting the clinic. Stacy Parks is one of our marketing leads who's helping us there, as well as Laura McCarthy who's helping us as well. So, the first thing I would say is that we are really thrilled about this partnership. This is a very exciting thing for us and probably in order, it's a big thank you out of the gate to the school district, to in particular, Dr. Anderson. This really was an innovative idea that she brought to us and invited us into this process and allows us to participate and be a partner in this collaboration. So, a big thank you to you as well. Also, a big thank you to Ms. Morrissey as well for letting us hang out in her school over the last several months and start to get prepared for this as well. So, we appreciate you inviting us to the conversation. As I think you have a reference document there. As I think you have a reference document there as well, we'll, along the way, but you know, our organization has grown a lot in the last couple of decades and we've become in recent, in recent days, we've had the luxury to be able to focus more on improving the health of Kansas. And the reason we've been able to have such success over the last couple of decades is we put the patient at the center of everything that we do. Every decision we make, every investment we make, every strategy we undertake, we always think about how this impacts the patient at the center of what we do. And I think this collaboration is a perfect example of that. We're going to be putting student health at the center of what we do. We're going to be bringing care closer to the student with this collaboration. So this is very consistent with our organization's mission. We're also excited because we have recently invested in the community here with the St. Francis facility as well, becoming part of our health system. And when we invest in a location across the state, community benefit is part of that as well. And so we think this is very consistent with that. This is a model that we're really excited about and not only does it allow us to bring sort of a clinic setting into the school environment that will allow students to be able to receive care they might otherwise have to deal with access, but there's also a pretty significant convenience factor as well, not only for the students, but you think about parents, friends and family that might otherwise have to arrange for travel, take off work. And so if we can have an opportunity for all those students to have access to care in the course of their day, we think that's going to be a big benefit too. So this is a, there's a clinic, for those of you who haven't seen it, there is an actual clinic in Topeka High School. So the high school was able to provide some space. We've been able to work with them on fitting out that space to be able to make it a real operating clinic. So that's first off, a pretty exciting, pretty exciting relationship. It'll be staffed by a nurse practitioner. This clinic will be staffed by Jessica Nichols, who's here tonight that I introduced earlier. We feel very lucky to have Jessica as part of this project. We wouldn't be able to do a project like this if we didn't have a local staff to staff it. I think you should feel lucky too. So Jessica is an all-star. So she is coming to us from the Children's Mercy Organization where she takes care of very complex kiddos. She is also a doctorate. She also will be on the faculty of the University of Kansas School of Nursing. So we really feel pretty lucky to have the type of talent that we're able to land for this, for this relationship, so.
Yes, okay. Can you stand for just a moment so we can acknowledge you?
Try and clap.
Like I said, this doesn't happen if we don't have a clinical professional in the staff and so we're really happy to have Jessica here. We'll also, Jessica will have a collaborating practice relationship. For those of you familiar with the nurse practitioner model, they have to have a collaborating position. So Jessica will have a collaborating position with one of the primary care physicians at St. Francis, Dr. Line Lutter. So she'll be able to collaborate with Dr. Line Lutter along the way if questions come up and they will regularly consult with each other on the care, future, and that's your thing. This clinic, we're currently planning on it to be open three days a week. In the sort of early stages, we will sort of limit the operating hours to make sure we're doing a good job of the care we're providing, but over time we can see that grow. That's kind of the baseline and we can see it grow from there. And also think about our other populations that might make sense to open the clinic as well, if you staff, if you have a search school. There may be some other opportunities that are still expanding. The types of services provided, I think there's a list to be handed out as well, but generally speaking, this is a walk-in primary care clinic. And so you've got a variety of sort of typical, you know, strep test or analysis, people test. There's some basic primary care clinic services that'll be provided. You know, one of the things that we take very seriously, and I know that the school board and the Topeka High staff do as well, is consenting to the care that will be received in the clinic. And so we've had a very thoughtful process about consenting to what types of care might be provided in the clinic. And there won't be students or patients, from our perspective, that nurse the clinic that wouldn't have a consent consent. One of the things that I know is on the school board's mind that we want to think about going forward and be thoughtful about is the provision of birth control and treatment for sexually transmitted disease or sexually transmitted infection. And we plan to work with the school board on a thoughtful process, how we can make a sense of providing those services for the school district. So we're taking that direction. The rollout of this clinic, like I said, we want to be thoughtful about it. So when we do things, we want to do them well and we're treating this client just like we treat any other client that we have in the health system. And so from, if you think about the clinic operations standpoint, a head of privacy and security standpoint, information technology standpoint, we're going through the process right now of really putting in place the infrastructure that we need to make this a safe environment to provide care and also to the level of quality that we have in the operations. So starting next week, Jessica and team will be onsite to start to do some of those introductory meetings and start the process and making sure we're doing this the right way. We've had IT teams in and out of the building for the last several weeks. I had an introductory meeting this Friday. And then we also have our electronic medical record team that is going to continue to come out as well. So all that process, we'll be working on getting the clinic to a good start date here. We'll be onsite starting next week, but the actual start date, we'll be seeing patients probably later in the semester, maybe the March timeframe. We just want to be really, really certain that we're doing it the right way, make sure we got the consenting process down right. To lead to that point, we'll be having the consent, those starts go out to parents in the coming weeks. We'll also have the process of the opportunity to open a house, February 20th is the date that we scheduled for that as well. So we're excited that would be a good opportunity to showcase the clinic and the services that can be provided. And again, doing so in a way where we're confident that we're providing good quality care, parents have consented in the way that they're comfortable with, the privacy and security of the clinic is taken into account. You know, and you can imagine as the, as the school year winds down, you go into the summer and the following year, you're probably thinking about things like physical supports, physicals, and we can revisit some of the other services that might be provided as well. And so I think we'll be in a good position to really ramp up the clinic over time. We've seen in the past, we've operated nothing quite this robust and sort of significant from a school-based clinical relationship, but we've had some similar relationships in Wyandotte County. And there's a ramp-up time. There's just a time that it takes to get everybody comfortable with the process, but we're excited. So, you know, other than that, I didn't have anything else from a prepared, from a nurse standpoint, but I'd be happy to answer your questions.
So questions from school board members? Dr. Nichols.
Can you expand on what you define consent? Is that parental consent or is that student consent if the student is 18?
Yeah.
Parental consent, I'm just, I just need to know.
Sure. So we'll treat it just like we would at any other patient. So if it's a minor, we'll need parental consent to provide the treatment and that's where the consent form would give to, to the students that are under 18. If you're over 18, just like you might imagine, that's the student.
That's what I assume, I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Dr. McCarthy.
Couple of questions and then I'll make my own comments on, because this is near and dear to my heart. I noticed on your press release, on the questions on the back, it says, will behavioral mental health services be offered through the health clinic? And it mentions mental health screening and referral. It's also my, my understanding that it was our intent eventually to have services provided actually onsite.
Sure. So, yeah, I'd like to mention, it's an important piece of this, that mental health screening is something that the school district's interested in, that they'll be able to provide. Like now, actual, the actual provision of the mental health services and treatment, just like we needed to find a nurse practitioner to provide those services, we'll need to be able to source those as well, but at least we have the platform.
Or unless we provide our own, Dr. Anderson? Would you like?
I guess part of the partnership was, one, the construction of the facility, but also making sure that we have a social worker, clinically licensed social worker to assist in providing services in the way that we agree on through the partnership. The school already has some services, but this would be in addition to what they already have. And Dr. Grimes, I believe Mae Ver will be in the audience, and if she's not now, she is working in collaboration with Ms. Morrissey on how best to have those wrapped around services in place.
And I also neglected to mention during this sort of ramp-up period, we'll be working with the school nurse and the school nurse and staff as well to understand, you know, what's the right kind of referral relationship, when is appropriate for the student to have the school nurse versus clinic.
Yeah, so we'll still be maintaining our, our school nurse. Certainly it was also, you know, in the mind of the board too, that the services be extended to staff at some point. Will that be based on kind of utilization?
Sure.
If there seems to be beyond the student population?
Yeah, I think, you know, as those of you that have worked in the medical profession know, you know, we want to make sure we have the volume to support the staff that we bring in. And so absolutely, and from our standpoint, it's just making sure we can source enough clinician manpower to tailor meet the needs as they arise. And so I think that's a, that's a process where we work with the school district just to make sure that, you know, our resources are tracking your demand and as we're ready to look and bring in staff on, to be able to see the clinic, make sure we have the right professionals to provide that service.
I'm sorry, Dr. Garcia is not here today. Dr. Hamena Garcia, who had other things come up because she's got many things on her plate, including, I believe, isn't she PTO president this year?
She's not this year, first year in a long time.
Okay, Topeka High, but she is very active in so many different pursuits and I really did like to acknowledge her as kind of the brainchild of this whole idea. She's a longtime physician in the Topeka community. She's a public health advocate. She's very much attuned to the needs of students. She's a parent of Topeka High students. And she was the one who first came to us with the idea of what would it be like to be able to offer primary care health to students and staff? Because we know students can't learn and teachers can't teach if they're sick and they're not able to learn and, and do what they need to do. It's very difficult for teachers to take time off. There's no time for a teacher to be sick, right? Not allowed. So it is a thought that that is something that may significantly help staff as well as help the bottom line because teachers have insurance. So that may be, make it a more sustainable model. But definitely for students, getting them in, in the office and to be able to get them back into the classroom as, as quick as possible and get them the services they need. So Dr. Garcia did lots of research and one thing she found was the exact model that she was interested in presenting to us was at Jennings, Dr. Anderson's old district. And so there was really a perfect confluence of a need arising in our community, interest brought forth by a parent and bringing together other parents at a session last year to discuss what that would be like and whether the interest seemed broader. And from there, lots of research, beginning discussion with partners, finding the brave souls who are willing to take this on and do what was right for the community and for students. Mr. Robbins making this happen, finding the funds for us to be able to rehab our historical Topeka High School, so things have to be done in a very careful fashion. And I think anybody who goes to the open house is going to be blown away, it's a state-of-the-art facility with, is just like walking into your doctor's office. So I think, I think our community, once again, we're providing them just the highest quality of facilities, which is what all, all students deserve. I'm sure I'll think of other things I haven't covered. I'm just thrilled to have you on board. Thank you for coming tonight and I look forward to working with you on this. Welcome to you, Ms. Nichols, for coming on board. Very impressed with your background. I'm especially pleased to see that specialization in child and adolescent medicine. That will serve you well for this. And thank you for, for the rest of you for helping.
Thank you.
One, one person you didn't say thank you to, and that's Dr. McCarthy. Dr. McCarthy and Dr. Garcia did the legwork on this and I, I was present in the initial planning and I must say, I never visualized what, what was there. It's, it's, and I'm not very good at looking at plans and seeing the total product, but it is a very good facility and Ms. Nichols is very lucky. Your doctor, Nichols, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. May I ask you a question?
Of course.
There are some sticky things that you're going to be running into with teenagers since my practice is OBGYN and I kind of know those sticky things. What do you, what do you do if an underage teenager, 16, 17 years old, which you will see, comes in for counseling on birth control or also counseling on the, what's it called? I see it's been a long time since I've heard. Morning after pill, things like that. Yeah.
So I think these are highly controversial topics, just for the fact that this is, that's part of the reason that we are going to roll these types of circumstances and clinic visits out in, we want to do it the best way possible for the students and for the families. Coming from a background in pediatrics, you know, I think that the parent involvement is something that we really have to gauge as we open this clinic and as we look at different services, whether this is going to be something that we do over time. I really want the school board's input, Ms. Morrissey's input, you know, especially the social work, because that, that's a situation that's not just medical. There is, there's multiple levels and there's multiple ramifications that come out of those decisions. And so it would be involvement with the parents, with the social workers, with the clinical staff. It's not a simple decision that's made in my office in 20 minutes, so.
So would you then, if, if the patient decides that she would want counseling, you would require her parents to be there?
Well, she would be underage, so that parental consent is vital. You know, anybody under the age of 18, we have to make sure that we are protecting the kids, protecting the parents, and making sure that we are following what's in the best interest for all the parties involved.
Right answer. Okay. Now, when you're treating STIs.
Yes.
And underage person, can they, and you've got parental consent to treat them, you get a positive result. So what do you do? Do you bring the parent in? I mean, that's a very sticky subject, that student.
And I, unfortunately, I don't have a straight black and white answer for that. And reason being, because I think there's a lot more conversations that need to happen as far as how we are going to involve those situations. Some are reportable, some are not. And so I think that's another, a whole other aspect of this conversation that we've not really been able to address to the magnitude that it needs to be. If we are going to be testing, we need to be treating. That is something that I.
And counseling.
And counseling, exactly. Because it is, it's full scope, you know, and it's something that prevention of those is also another aspect that will be discussed. Because you can't treat an infection without discussing the prevention of further spread. And so I think those are all topics that we're, I'm looking forward to the fact that we have some time to build up before the clinic starts seeing patients so that we can address potential issues that we haven't even thought about yet. So with different treatments and infections and prescriptions and, you know, there's a lot of avenues to this that we still are working on.
Thank you. You're working with teenagers, so you will come across all kinds of different scenarios. But we appreciate, I mean, I'm an alumnus of the University of Kansas, so we appreciate your, your help.
Thank you.
With all of those comments being said, it is amazing how things truly do come full circle with the idea being generated from a parent and then looking up, it happened to be Jennings, which they just hired me on board and said, hey, can we come visit? But the clinic itself in Jennings was an idea brought to me from Ms. Bergdorf, who is in the audience, and she is the one who introduced the idea of having a SPOT and helped connect with Wash U and helped get those resources. So this idea of this collective energy and things really taking many, many people, some who are, you know, right here in our space, but others who are beyond, to grow that idea and make it happen is pretty remarkable. So again, thank you so much for the partnership and we are thrilled and excited. Again, the ribbon cutting, February 20th and the time, was it five o'clock?
Six, six.
Six o'clock. And so we invite all to come out to that, to be able to tour the clinic. And we look forward to also posting, if you really either didn't get this or couldn't fore.
fully see it, this will be posted on the webpage tomorrow, as well as the press release is being sent out throughout the district. But again, thank you to the partners. Our goal is to serve the whole child. And we know if we don't serve those basic needs, learning cannot happen at its best. So thank you for helping us serve all of our students.
Thank you all very much. We're really pleased with the partnership and thrilled to be a part of it. And one more note I might add on a personal level, I don't think I've shared this with any of you or my team, but my grandmother, Barbara Wilson, is actually in the Topeka High Hall of Fame. And so this is a little personal now to me. She sends past, but this is a, this is a nice sort of personal project for me to work on. So I'm really happy to do that. So thank you very much.
And Ms. Kruger has the certificate that we'll make sure that they receive at this time. We already kind of took a pre-thought out, so that way you're freed up at this time. And we just made the adjustment to the certificate. So for our University of Kansas Health System staff, the adjustment is just reflecting the partnership aspect of the overall partnership. And if you need other copies, let us know. We'll be sure to get that and get that framed and get it over to you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is just Ms. Wallace will be giving just a brief update about the upcoming parent meetings. And we leave this open for any discussion board members wanted to have as a topic came up a couple of weeks ago, just a question and conversation that board members may want to have about the Let's Talk curriculum. So Ms. Wallace will start off with just sharing where those parent meetings will be held and what resources by video means are now available. And then we'll turn it over to the board for any discussion you would like to have.
Okay. We had our first parent meeting at Topeka High Tuesday night. We had four parents and a couple of board members who participated and attended. Ms. Sandberg was, well, she presented from 5:30 to 7:00. There were quite a few questions, answers. It was not exactly what we had anticipated. So about halfway through the presentation, I did ask her if she could cover more of the content so that parents knew what they were, what their children were going to be exposed to and had the full breadth of the content so that they could make an informed decision. She did shift and shared quite a bit of the content of the course. And I spoke with her afterwards. The next two meetings, next Tuesday night is at Topeka West from 5:30 to 7:00 in the Media Center. And then Tuesday, the 29th, is at Highland Park High School in the Media Center from 5:30 to 7:00. And those presentations will include significantly more of the content. The video is about a 25-minute video that covers really the entire presentation and goes through all of the slides that she uses with students.
And at this time, the video, according to Mrs. Kruger, watching the video, there have been about 300 or so, I guess, views of the video. So we know parents are getting online and they're looking at it, at least a section of parents. We'll turn it over to the board.
So from that meeting, a couple of things. We are adding the opt-out letter as part of the next Community News along with the video. And it will also be available on our webpage. Class or physical dimensions teachers provide that to all students in their classes in advance. Our publicity has been both Ms. Kruger putting it out as an email to all parents, high school parents, and then at the high schools themselves, they have been putting it out through their parent link, in their newsletters, and through their teachers. Any questions?
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you so much. I did, Ms. Wallace, thank you for that briefing. And also, I did get a chance to attend the meetings on this past Tuesday. And I appreciate the redirection because it appeared that she had the idea that she was going to teach parents how to teach sex to the children versus share the content of the class, of the class with the parents. And so I appreciate the redirection. And just, I guess, well, one of the parents brought up the fact that, you know, after we got to some of that, well, here's what I've heard. This is my concern. And so then we got to go and watch a few of the videos. But mostly, I just want to make sure they get to see what we've seen, you know, that it's really clear. And like you said, they can respond authentically to what's going to be part of the class. The other thing is, I would like to suggest that we bring the opt-out letters to that, to the sessions, since we're right there. And sometimes I think that's the other thing that gets confused when we're trying to figure out where to find this letter, what's the timing of me getting it back to the right person. So if we have them at the sessions, the next two sessions, that would be great. And the other thing is, I asked the parents how they found out about the meeting. And the two that were there, they said Community News. So I'm not sure, well, two of them that were there. We had four total?
Correct. And I know that two of them also indicated the email that Ms. Kruger sent out was how they had learned about it. And then a couple of them had watched the video or at least part of the video.
Okay. I think, since I feel like we're still trying to find that one thing that gets the majority of our parents, because we know Topeka High is a very big school and we would have hoped for more parents to be there. But we're just wondering if we're making the connect, you know? That's, that would be my only concern. And when I watched the video, and I had shared this with some, one of our administrators, as I watched the video, the one concern that came up for me was that there was no reiteration of those who choose to be the male-female binary. I mean, if you choose because your anatomy is female and you're going to live female, then that's not, that's not confirmed in those videos. That's not as supported in the videos or the presentation that's being made. And because we're talking about different lifestyles, and we know there's many that have chosen that, we don't want them to feel like they're the outsiders because they've chosen to live as they were born, I mean, as their bodies dictate, their anatomy dictate. So that was the one thing that came up for me. And one other piece that seems somewhat disjointed is when we talk male, female, we talk the transgender and the different life choices, we go into anatomy after that. And anatomy doesn't align with what we're promoting as far as the options for being male, female based on anatomy. And because we know anatomically, you have to be, have female anatomy in order to have a baby. But it was just a disjoint in this for me. I don't know if the board members had the chance to actually watch the video, but it's concerning because I'm thinking, we're going to be presenting this to young people, what is the continuity of information that we're getting? Because we're also going to go to science and we're going to be talking about chromosomes and how that aligns. Those are the pieces that become disjointed for me.
I might just comment. I watched the video. And you're right in the fact that it doesn't say a female has ovaries and makes eggs. It says basically, the eggs are made and the sperm connects. It doesn't say that the male makes the sperm and the female makes the eggs. But it does say an individual that has ovaries, that has uterus, can get pregnant and carries a pregnancy. And a person who makes sperm will join the egg in the tube and go to the uterus, and that person will carry the pregnancy. So it doesn't discern those genders. And I, you know, I think that's sensitive to cross-gender people myself. But it does tell us the correct anatomy. I mean, you have to have an ovary and you have to have uterus to carry pregnancy. And you have to have testicles and penis to deliver sperm.
I guess the best, the question is also sensitive to those who are not cross-gender. Is it sensitive to those who have chosen to live as their anatomy dictates?
When you're talking about revamping a little bit, how the sessions are going to go, are you planning to have them play the video the night of these sessions? That is an option, or she could take them through the slides? Because essentially, the video is her talking through all of the slides that she presents to students.
Right. I've watched it.
So she could do that live, or we could show the video?
We'll show the video at the end. So we'll go through the slides just to make sure it's available, you know, so we can, it is an option, but I think what we could do, we don't want to be redundant and show the video, then re-show the slides.
Right.
So we'll go through the presentation, show all the slides, and say, hey, we have this video as well, for those that want to watch it as we close to the last, you know, 20 minutes. We're going to go ahead and play the video. We encourage you to say. So that way we, we'll, it will-
Right. Well, it sounded like there was a, the confusion, one of the confusion was they assumed that everybody had seen the video, whatever thing. And I guess that, that was what was obviously, people didn't do that. Yeah. So that's why I asked the question.
I believe that it was, what she presented, or at least started to present, was an extension of the video-
Yeah.
-with the understanding that the people who had come had watched.
Had watched it, right. I think that's what I thought must have happened, so.
But that was not necessarily the case. Okay.
Yeah. Well, you're, obviously, going through the slides makes more sense with her there showing them and having, being able to respond to the questions, because those are the kinds of things that generate the angst on some folks about how we're dealing with those issues. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
One more.
I had the opportunity to go, and I was appreciative of the fact that the presenter still presents the information in a respectful way of people that have values that they get from home and are respectful for that concept. I didn't, I couldn't stay till the end, and so I didn't see the last part, version redirected. But I'm still confident that this person in her business can do a good job teaching our students the content. Because I know Dr. Morrison reviewed the old curriculum and found it lacking. And so I'm appreciative of the effort that we're making to make sure our students have the ability to make proper decisions for their own health.
Just informational, I planned to go to the Highland Park one, but I couldn't, I can't make the, okay.
Is the video the one that we saw or sent six weeks ago?
Yes. Ms. Kruger, would you send out a reminder of the times for those? I know we're supposed to know those back. Okay. So we have a discussion item. Our- One United Voice. And Ms. Kruger, we have been in contact with Mr. Woods, and she will discuss this.
So on your tables, you have the most recent version of the One United Voice document. It is identical to what has been presented previously with one change that Mr. Woods has expressed his desire to have on here, which is on the very front, right under the One United Voice. It says, "As the state of Kansas has experienced surplus revenue and has funding available, elected officials should take advantage of the opportunity to fully fund public schools to meet the court's directive." And I spoke with Mr. Woods this morning, or this afternoon, I guess, and he shared that it's still his desire that we approve this version of the document, that he didn't have anything, comments that he wanted to portray to you all, past that. But this would be his desire that the board approved this version of the document.
I would say to the board, one of the items that may occur is that, you know, the graphics and the logos on there, since the R wording may be a little adjusted, at least in terms of that one item, that our document may be on a Topeka Public Schools letterhead and so forth, since that wording is something from one of our board members specifically. So that may be just the one adjustment in terms of design and the, what's reflected on the logos in that regard.
Any discussion by anybody else? We can change this to an action item if we have a motion to do that?
It is? I don't mind. Up there.
Okay. Good. That's even better. Evidently, it didn't make my computer.
I would move that we approve the One United Voice legislative agenda material as presented tonight.
Motion on second? We've already had discussion? All right. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Yeah, the top area will be Topeka Public Schools. And we will not include the other districts since they haven't approved the wording that Mr. Woods changed. Well, I said it was on action. Is it really on action?
It's on my action, I think. It's discussion and action.
So the ones who have their computers of the, and have that on the fresh screen, it will show up as, as the agenda was prior to the discussion. So those who have access to it, it will show up on your screen.
Okay. So we're done. So-
Comments?
Comments, Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, do you have any board comments?
Just looking forward to Saturday evening when Dr. Anderson will be honored at the Living the Dream Scholarship banquet.
Dr. Nichols?
Just one comment. As I listened to Governor Kelly's State of the State last, I was encouraged by her words and support of public education, dismayed at the partisanship opposed, opposed that notion that we were encouraged by her leadership.
Ms. Johnson?
I was encouraged by hearing from Dr. Nichols on tonight. I'm so glad she was able to attend and hearing her perspective regarding parents and so on. And us as an organization taking that into account, I would consider those kind of needs for our students. I understand there's a, there's a point that-
Hi. Just wanted to congratulate Dr. Anderson in advance. I will not be able to be there Saturday night, but I will be attending the Friday noon luncheon. Hope to see you there.
Ms. Kruger?
And I would say congratulations also for the first time in how many ever years I'm on the board. I'm going to miss this, both events this weekend. But it's nice to have you being recognized for your excellence. So thank you.
And I will also not be able to make the Saturday night one, but will be there Friday at lunch. So just want to know that we support you 100% and are very proud that you're superintended. Interestingly enough, the intergovernmental council that I went to last Tuesday presented the Washburn view of the wind farm. And so it was very informative about why they decided to join this consortium. And I was very encouraged. And Mr. Robbins spoke up with all the other districts there and said, "Our board is going to okay that this, this week, hopefully." So-
You're confident.
Yeah. So, and like Scott, we heard that in the finance committee about all this. And the money saving, we just congratulate Mr. Robbins for all he does. He does, keeps He does keep saving this money. So I can't think of anything. We have to go, yes, I'll take a motion to go to executive.
Also, I have to admit, Mr. Robbins, I did not realize that was a green suit. He kept saying he was wearing his green suit and I kept looking at him and I thought, I had a meeting with him, I didn't see the green suit. Anyway, Mr. Press and I moved the board recess to executive session to discuss individual employment, excuse me, employee contracts and performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel essential pension under coma. And the open meeting will resume at, I hate to say at 9:00. 9:00.
Is there a second? Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. All in favor? All opposed?